In our curriculum, in the support of staff, and the opportunities that we have for students, I will share a very brief story. We have, we've not worked together long enough. We have worked together for some time. And it was my hope to offer on behalf of the board, words of thanks at the Honor Society, or the award ceremony that took place at the end of last week. And she said, oh, no, you won't. She said, because tonight is something where we want to have positive reflections on the great work of our students. And I would not want any of that cast on me, because tonight is about the students. And I think in a nutshell, that is reflective of the work and the aptitude she brings to Southern High each and every day. However, she's not so lucky in this forum, because while that was her meeting, this one is not. And so I will take this occasion on behalf of the board and our entire community to thank you for your extraordinary work and know that we wish you the very, very best at Amaya's High School. So, thank you.
It has been a privilege and an honor, truly.
We're here to talk about partnerships, I should say, you know, right? We have, as you know, we spoke about breaking barriers, and we have ELA, but also post-secondary partnerships. It's part of our district goals. This has been driven by Mrs. Gariello and her work. And we thought it very important to have an update as to progress on this effort. So, Mrs. Gariello, with that, the stage is yours. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, in addition to the dual enrollment work that we've been doing for the past year, year and a half, we started reaching out to additional, now that we were back in person and we were starting field trips again and bringing guest speakers in, we wanted to get more community involvement this year. And over the Christmas break, I reached out to the Manufacturers Resource Center of the Lehigh Valley. And they've been very gracious and had multiple meetings with myself and Dr. Trinkle and Mr. Kinslow. And so, we have met a few times, and we are excited to say that we are one of five pilot schools in the Lehigh Valley. The high school is one of five high schools in the Lehigh Valley that has been chosen to participate in a new program. Now, the Manufacturers Resource Center has been around for about 30 years. And they work in Berks, Carbon, Lehigh, Northampton, and Schuylkill Counties. We have partnered with them in the past through something called the Dream Team. And we do this every year. And we invite members of the Dream Team in. Dream Team is MRC's younger employees, not at the MRC, but they're traditionally STEM-related people and in the technical and STEM education areas. And we bring these folks and we have them into our tech ed classes this year. We have them into our physics classes and our computer science classes here at the high school. And the Dream Team is composed of young STEM professionals who volunteer their time through the Manufacturers Resource Center. And they make presentations and do hands-on work with our kids. So, we've already been working with Manufacturers Resource Center through the Dream Team since I've been back here at Southern High for the past four years. Dr. Donahue at the middle school has also been working with the Manufacturers Resource Center to promote, and I think he's been doing it for almost 10 years, for the What's Cool About Manufacturing program. And that's to increase awareness of career paths in manufacturing. And the middle schools in the Lehigh Valley compete and they make videos. And they team up with one individual business or partner. And they create resources for career exploration. But the middle school kids actually produce, write, produce, film, and do the videos. And then there's a competition, I think it was just last month, I believe, over at Steel Sacks, that Dr. Mayan attended. What's new and exciting, in addition to the Dream Team and in addition to What's Cool About Manufacturing, we are one of five schools that have been chosen to pilot the STEAM Club. So, the Manufacturers Resource Center has gotten a grant of about $200,000 from the state. And they are partnering with local businesses and pairing up a local business that focuses on STEM and STEAM-related career paths with a high school to create a STEAM Club. Now, we're in the infancy stages. We're just thrilled that we were one of the pilot schools to be chosen. We're going to be working with the IU. Eric Leck at the IU is heading up this consortium of schools, these five schools, and kind of combining efforts so we don't duplicate efforts. We have a lot of different ways we can go with this. We can embed this into a course so that all students get exposed. We can create a club with an advisor that partners with a local business. So, there's a lot of different ways we can go. We can create a curriculum through this club as well. And so, right now, all the schools are kind of just talking to each other and figuring out all the different possible pathways. So, we're considering a course and we're considering a club. But it gives high school students the opportunity to collaborate with area manufacturers, get the word out to our graduating seniors about possible careers and advanced technology opportunities that are out in the Lehigh Valley. So, there are five high schools. We are one of them, 10 local manufacturers. And then, of course, the Manufacturers Resource Board and our IU, all working together to bring this opportunity to our kids. So, it's just kind of cool. It's new, and we'll be starting it up in September.
Now, along those same lines, I don't have any questions, but along those same lines, I think we're hoping to have some announcement in the near future about Lehigh Carbon Community College and some of the ongoing negotiations or engagement we've had with them.
We are moving forward. And this Friday, at our Professional Development Day, the high school folks will be working through a lot of course outlines that LTRC has provided to us to see which of their courses will line up with the current courses that we teach and see if we can offer more dual enrollment opportunities here at the high school. We have, you know, some wrinkles to iron out still, but we are working and hoping to have that up and running for the start of the school year.
It's a year-long effort, pretty much.
It certainly has.
And then I think Mansfield is soon to be.
Yes. So, the MOU that you had agreed to with Mansfield, that's really cool. Now, that's completely outside of school. But it is just an opportunity for our students to take courses, college courses, at a severely reduced rate or sometimes free, depending on the course. And they can do that in the evenings or in the summer. And then, they would get a Mansfield transcript and they would carry that to the school that they're attending. The Pashi Schools, the Pennsylvania Consortium of Schools, will accept those credits. That's a guarantee. But then, some other schools will also accept Mansfield transfer credits as well. So, and that would take place outside of school. So, that's a little different than our Seton Hall University of Pittsburgh and hopefully our LTRC collaboration. Mansfield is on their own time, but still a wonderful opportunity to get college credits at a seriously reduced rate.
Asking you to depart, knowing that you have an emergency.
Thank you so much. I appreciate going first. Thank you so much.
We have still a couple of comments. Lynette Sager.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lynette Sager, and I'm the Director at Southern Lehigh Public Library. Sorry about the interruption. Start again. I'm the Director at Southernly High Public Library. And I wanted to address the board tonight, as well as community residents, and thank you for your continued support of the library. Your contribution has consistently helped us to serve the students of the school district, as well as all local residents. As we continue to feel the effects of the pandemic, it's important to note that, much like the school district, the library, back in 2020 and continuing through the present, was able to move very quickly to offer, at first, virtual services when our building was completely closed. We then added curbside services and we gradually reopened the building and we resumed business as usual. Some of the services that I want to highlight that we provide specifically to students. We are a founding member, library of the Lehigh Carbon Library Consortium. And that was founded in 2018. It consists of 13 local libraries. We all share one card. We have increased access to resources because we are able to share the resources of all 13 libraries. And that totals well over 487,000 items. We have a daily van delivery service, which is open to all residents, including the students. So, we can get those resources anywhere from 24 to 48 hours into our library for pickup by our local patrons. For many, many years, I'm in my 33rd year at Southernly High Public Library. And for as long as I have been there and further than that, we have operated what we used to call Summer Reading Club. We now call it Summer Fun Club. In 2021, we had 501 student participants in that program. It happens when the schools are closed. So, we are able to help the students to avoid that summer slide that tends to happen. It's a reading challenge, as well as other various summer programming. And we have a good lineup this year. We adopted the statewide theme. It's called Oceans of Possibilities, so it has the marine theme to it. And we will begin registration for that very shortly, on June 1st. We also support the school district's Summer Reading List assignment for students in the upper grades. And we've been doing that for years as well. We provide multiple copies of titles so that students are not burdened by having to purchase those titles on their own. At the end of 2021, we had 2,560 children and teens as registered cardholders at our library. We are currently working on a special project with Cory Robbins at the middle school to ensure that her students have easy access to a Southernly High library card. We hope to expand that project to include other schools in the future. Southernly High Public Library is a nationally recognized family place library. Oh, I'm sorry. All right. I thought I had it down to three minutes. Obviously, I didn't. But thank you so much for your support. We hope that you will continue to support the library.
Mark Sullivan.
Good evening, Mark Sullivan. I'm an Upper Salkin resident. I have my two kids and my wife receive pre-education here at Southernly High. My official title is District Consultant Librarian. I serve as a advisor to the public libraries of Lehigh, Carbon Counties, and serve as coordinator of group activity, district-wide activity. And in that capacity, I just wanted to highlight a couple more things that were, excuse me, in the packet given to you earlier by Lynette Sager provided to you. And first off, Lynette has always gone above and beyond in making sure the public officials and the general public can see how their tax dollars are used and look at the library. She always provides more information than probably the officials even need or care to have. But there's never been any question about the library being responsible fiscal steward of community funds. In that packet, I'd like to call your attention to a spreadsheet that shows the per capita contributions to the libraries by all of the Lehigh County municipalities in 2021. And just so you know, for the purposes of the OSA Commonwealth Libraries, school districts are also considered municipalities. The spreadsheet shows that the per capita rates for our libraries and municipal partners are clearly not exorbitant by any means. And to add to that, to answer a question asked to me earlier, seven of the 12 libraries in our district received appropriations from their school districts. It's Allentown, Casaca, Dimmick Oaks, Jim Thorpe, Lehigh, Palmerton, Sladington, of course, Southernly High. Two others have tax referendums through their school district, but the school district just fumbles those funds. So, it's never considered an appropriation. We did our own wage survey back in 2013 of libraries in our region. And while that information is, of course, a little bit dated, if you compare it to the 2021 numbers from the libraries just in our district, you'll see that the proportions are still similar. And you'll see what the library pays its directors and the staff costs as a percentage of total expenses. You'll see that those numbers are on the low end compared to the other libraries. And quite frankly, the library staff has been underpaid for years compared to their peers and compared to what has become the new norm for expected hourly rates. Lastly, the library needs to be recognized. And I hope this board continues to recognize the library for what it is, a natural and irreplaceable partner with the school district for parenting kids for school and for increasing literacy and a love for learning. The library currently has a phenomenal children's librarian. And the number of children attending programs is comparable to many much larger libraries in the state. The library is being used. It is valued by our community. And it is positively impacting the education of our children in all the ways shown in Lynette's letter. So, thanks for your continued support. And Lynette, myself, and the board of trustees would be happy to answer any questions you ever have about how we're making our tax dollars work for the library. So, thank you.
Tim Ernie.
Good evening. I already sent the board and superintendent some thoughts about the handbook, severe weather notifications, student treats, and about possibly streaming the musical, but I found out that that has some licensing issues. So, tonight I speak about one topic, thanks to the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Our vision statement mentions words like "community" and "relationship," "collaboration," and "partnership." Therefore, I thank the committee for including a priority of social-emotional learning, or SEL. I was surprised the first time I heard it mentioned in the media as a negative. Teddy Roosevelt once said, "To educate the mind only is to educate a menace to society." Of course, I want to focus on academics, but citizenship takes more than that. There has always been and should be emotional, social components to a full education. When you did something wrong and a teacher called you in the hallway to apologize to the student, that was SEL. When I had a student that was sad and I gave a smile and said, "It's okay to be upset," that was SEL. When you coached try to shake hands at the end of the game, that was SEL. Emotional learning. Some in our community have talked eloquently about the mental health needs of our students. Emotional learning is a way to help our students cope. Emotional quotient, EQ, needs to be talked about with IQ, intelligence, as being a factor in success and happiness. Social learning. I'm sure Mr. Maung would agree that he needs not only intelligent workers, but also workers who can function successfully as a team. Social learning can help our students with those workplace skills. One of the purposes of public schools, as stated in the Pennsylvania School Code, is to provide opportunities to collaborate with others. I've been trained in a Medal of Honor school program. Medal of Honor is awarded to the highest qualities of character, specifically courage, sacrifice, patriotism, citizenship, integrity, and commitment. Not a single one of those mentions academic success. We want intelligent people in our armed services, like Mr. Dimmick. But I contend that we also need people with social-emotional skills and character. Our future leaders need self and social awareness in addition to knowing the basics. Again, thank you to the committee for recognizing this priority, along with improving our academic program. I also want to do a shout-out, of course, for our musical, fourth most Freddie nominations in the area. And wish them luck this Friday, I believe. Thank you.
We did have an executive session this evening, so I'm reporting that. And I would like a motion to approve the minutes from the April 25th meeting, as well as the board workshop meeting on May 25th.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Anyone opposed? Mrs. Gary, that's approved. That's man?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Reinhardt. First, a construction update. We had to release, I think as many know, a memo regarding the intermediate school and expressing concerns about the potential for the external walls and the brick on those external walls. This came in response to a report from Aldano Necorado that said that while the risk of falling pieces of brick is low, very low, it is not out of the realm of possibility. We've actually have seen on the ground small pieces and flakes of brick. And so, given that report, we decided to alter the movements and the instructions given to our students when they're outside to keep them away from the side of the walls. We're in the process. We have ordered signage to post up. And again, while the risk is low, it is not inconsequential. And as a result, we're just taking this precaution. With respect to remediation, Mr. Pepe has issued RFPs for two engineering firms to provide proposals to assist in not only further identifying the problem, but also developing solutions that would ultimately lead to remediation projects that we think will take both a significant amount of time and perhaps a significant amount of resources. But it is necessary for us to do because all information indicates that the absence of action will only have the problem get worse over time. And so, I've been, a quick update. We've had RFPs released for stadium project. We offered a two-week extension for those RFPs to come in at the request of some of the vendors who have been here and measuring and sizing up the project and look forward to presenting proposals. So, that concludes the construction update. Moving on to B. We have completed the process of RFPs. Those RFPs have been reviewed. Mr. Demick, as the Chair of the Committee, has spearheaded interviews with firms. And we now have a recommendation for the board to appoint King Spry as our solicitor, under the terms and conditions of the agreement contained in the attachment.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Anyone opposed? And King Spry will, where King Spry is our new solicitor.
Okay. Then, C, Mrs. Gariello always presents. Moving on to D. We ask the board for a motion to approve the Comprehensive Plan for Public Review prior to a motion for school board approval, which will occur on June 27th, 2022, with thanks to Dr. Trinkle and the committees of administrators and staff that she utilized in support of this plan.
We have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
And under the school code, in May, we have to appoint a secretary. So, I asked the board to consider a motion to appoint a secretary for the term listed in the motion.
Do we have any nominations for secretary?
So, our current secretary is Nicole King, is that right?
Yes. Did you just pick up, folks, because there's people listening who should...
I asked if there was any reason why she would not want to continue to serve.
No, I will continue to serve.
I will nominate Nicole King to serve as secretary. A second then.
Any other nominations? So? Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nicole King will continue to serve as secretary with the term expiring May 31st, 2025. We also have a similar situation with the secretary. So, I'm sorry, you're trying to board treasurer.
Okay, and...
Do we have any nominations for treasurer? And this will be for the term again through May 31st, 2025.
I nominate Christopher Wayack.
I just want to clarify, that's, the treasurer is a one-year term though, right? Secretary's four-year term, treasurer's one-year term, that was my understanding? I believe the treasurer's a one-year term. Starts on July 31st.
The treasurer is in the business section. I got ahead of myself.
Dr. Trinkle. Dr. Trinkle, Special Education and Student Services, please. Oh, yes, oh, sure. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, my apologies. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm terribly sorry. I'm terribly sorry.
We're just, that's what my question was going to be. We're just on 7F, but let's continue, right? Okay, great. And the agenda, we're on 7F, but let's keep going.
So, we have nominations for Christopher Wayack, for treasurer, but that is a one-year term. Do we have any other nominations? Dr. Wayack, who do you think will serve as treasurer?
I would.
Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Dr. Wayack will serve as treasurer for the next year. Yeah. No, apologies to...
I know. So, Dr. Trinkle, Special Education and Student Services.
The first item is the School-Based Mental Health Services Group Agreement for Continued Support for School-Based Behavioral Health with St. Luke's Physicians Group. This is no-cost program. And it's actually identified as the YES Program for School-Based Mental Health Services. It will be one full-time counselor, grades nine through 12. One full-time counselor, grades seven through eight. One full-time counselor, which will split JPLIS, Hopewell, and Ribbey Bell, respectively. It is an actual expansion from the services that we were currently receiving from Lehigh Valley Health Network, which was a cost. This is part of our larger athletic training agreements, which is just embedded in there. And it can be reconfigured based on need. We're actually setting up site licensing for the schools the first week in June with St. Luke's and the Department of Health. So, that process is moving forward. Any questions?
I had a quick question. So, because we did get some emails from community members. So, I'm assuming then, in this case, it will be an exclusive agreement. And so, all mental health services will be provided by St. Luke's because there was some confusion, I think.
Correct. We're in a transition process right now, working through identifying those continued cases that will need, and those individuals will need support in transitioning those cases.
So, you're notifying those families and transitioning?
Already been, yes, yes.
Does this mean those families need to change therapists?
It will change the clinician, yes, yes. The actual clinician at the high school was leaving. And it was timed, just kind of timed the way it did. She was seeking employment at another health services field. So, the transition actually was a transition nicely for the students at this point. But we have been working through that once we identified that that venue will be changed and working through that process immediately.
Dr. Trinkle, how does the mechanics of exiting the LVHN program coincide with the institution of this one upon approval?
We already started that process in working with LVHN, their supervisors, and the individuals at the Health Network reviewed their contract to make sure that we were not in any discrepancy there. And we're well ahead of the timelines, as outlined in the agreement, before we had reached out to St. Luke's for the licensing. So, to make sure that we weren't in noncompliance with that factor. But as far as, we were, once that was cleared, we wanted to make sure that the students that were receiving services were well aware, the families were well aware, so that transition could take place. All of that has been ironed out. We wouldn't have moved forward with site licensing without that taking place first.
Thank you.
Thanks. Some of my questions are covered. When you say the site licensing, does that mean that the schools will serve as a potential, once it goes through? The schools will serve as a potential location where students could come over the summer? As a, so, okay, so it would remain more local that we, that's an improvement from what we have now?
Correct.
So, that would be great.
We will license as many rooms that we have available and that meet criteria. It has to meet certain criteria. Windows, a phone, locked door, locked cabinet, those types of things. And that way, if there were a location concern or we needed additional space, we'd have more than one option to pick. But we've already, Mr. Friedman has walked through the schools, the identified schools with St. Luke's to already kind of prepare that. And the Department of Health has to come out and... and the Health, Department of Health has to come out and do that.
That consistency is great for kids, thanks for putting in the legwork to make that certification happen. Is this continued, this program is still paid for, you said, the payment, I don't need details, but is this still something where the student's health, the family's health insurance would cover, and it would be billed through the family's health insurance, and if they had needs to identify how to pay for that, otherwise, we would help navigate those systems for, you know, help connect them and explain that to them, but it's still through their own individual health insurance?
That is the first layer.
That's the first layer, but there are, if that layer doesn't apply, there are other supports to help kids who wouldn't necessarily?
There would be outreach from our staff to locate that ability to help the families to do that. There's also in-kind hours built in, if that were not, if that were not successful.
Great, thanks. And my last question, I have to give credit where credit is due, former Board Member Jen Smith was a social worker, and so she, in our prior contract, when we were setting this up with the, what we, a program we currently have, she asked the question of, with counselors, are these the people who will be providing these sessions in our current plan, our current license, our current agreement? It specified that the folks who are in our schools will be fully certified social worker counselor folks who are certified, fully certified and accredited. Is that, that similar, and you might not have this answer tonight, but is the similar from a contract basis, my question would be, is the same stipulation for that credentialing of our current professionals in those seats working with kids, is that similar?
That's a component of the certification, yes.
Okay, great, the licensing, so fully licensed practitioners?
That is not a requirement, but that is, that is the potential that we would receive, some with a full licenser, licensing for the MSW without the LPC attached to it, but would be certified clinicians of the MSW, yes.
So it's a possibility, it's not currently guaranteed, but it's a possibility?
We haven't even, we haven't stacked it quite yet, because we haven't...
Oh, yes, but a part of this contract we're approving tonight, and I think in our prior agreement, is it, right, this is a, no, we're approving the agreement, yes, in our prior agreement, I think it specified the level of...
It does not specify the level.
It does not?
To my, it could be, it could be, that is what our expectation is, and that's what they would have to hire, is how we've gone and addressed that situation.
No, thanks, that answers my question, not, I appreciate, thanks.
We do very much appreciate the services LVHN has provided, they've done a wonderful, it was a wonderful partnership, and we do thank them for all the work that they did, and continue to do in the transition process with our students, we do very much appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments?
I, sorry, I just have one more to that end, yes, LVHN has done an amazing job and serviced our school. The reason that we're switching to is purely a contractual one at this point?
LVHN was cost, too, we were being charged, I don't want to, I think it was well over $10,000.
That's okay, just both cost, I wasn't sure if it was also contractual, bringing athletic services and these under the same...
It was an add-on to that contract with athletics, and a positive one based on the services provided.
Okay, but the primary reason is cost, is what I'm hearing?
Yeah, it was already included in the other contract at no cost.
Yep.
So it was simply an opportunity to take advantage.
Uh, thank you.
It was already in the contract.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
So that covers both the medical services agreement?
The medical services agreement was a separate contract. That one, we took the existing contract, which had expired, it was a five-year contract, went through, did the comparisons, looked at what was new or more positive, still no cost to the district, extended for a 10-year period, it was also reviewed by the Attorney, and it was approved, and Andrea in Special Services also worked with me to review that contract, and we ended up bringing it forward to put it on to the agenda.
That's for Dr. Gibson, who's our school district physician, doing our consultation with our nurses, our med orders, our school district physicals, or any other kind of professional development that we have, we've had in the past.
Okay, so I'm taking these together, does anybody have any questions about that contract, physicians for contract for medical services? Okay. So, let's go, we'll give you the motion then to approve St. Luke's Physicians Group for School-Based Mental Health Services, as well as a medical services group with St. Luke's, approved June 30th, 2025. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I just, I just want to abstain, I'm just going to abstain from that route.
Dr. Wayack abstaining from the vote. So, motion from Carrie. I guess there's also the safety care recertification training?
Yes, this is, this is a motion to approve the workshop for safety care recertification training. This is offered through our IU21. It, this agreement will train up to 20 staff members, including administration, teachers, and other professionals for a one-day recertification training and de-escalation techniques to support students in our buildings. It's not an initial certification, so it's just a refresher, typically required on an annual basis, and safety care is the actual name of the program that we've been using.
Motion?
Second.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion Carrie's to approve the safety care recertification training. Let's look at curriculum and student staff, I think, we have a bunch of handbooks here?
Yes, so items, in item six, we have A through E, which would include the elementary parent handbooks, JPILS handbook, the middle school, and the high school, as well as the athletic codes of conduct for the high school and the middle school. So that would be item six through E, or A through E, rather.
And I believe there were some written emails regarding some suggestions?
Just minor, yes, yes. Yep.
Does anybody have any comments or questions about your first woman?
I do, sorry. My comments were regarding the dress code. I just, is there any way to have it more uniform or consistent, with certain, I guess, exceptions, depending on grade level, between the handbooks? Because, I just want to call your attention to the middle school. It is on page 33 out of 53. It's, the first bullet item is the exact same in the high school dress code, however, for the middle school, it also includes sleeveless shirts, cutoff shirts, and so on and so forth. I mean, I don't have any problem with a lot of those items that are listed there, however, sleeveless shirts, I think, is a little bit tough, given, you know, summer months, and, you know, there's a point made that there's, it should be more professional attire, and clearly, professional women wear tank tops or sleeveless shirts, I should say, all the time. And even our uniforms for multiple athletics at the middle school are, include sleeveless tops. I just don't see why there's a distinction between middle school and high school. Actually, middle school is the only one that lists sleeveless shirts, I don't, tube tops, sure, no problem. But, just throwing it out there, that maybe it could be...
And I think perhaps the history there, there was a handbook change, I think the high school probably used to have similar wording, and I think students came and spoke, and the point was made, and I think it probably, because I thought they were identical, the fact that you, I thought when the change was made, they would change with both, so I would support, I think between middle school and high school, consistent dress code wording would probably just also make a more seamless transition. I think that's probably just something that, kind of an oversight of the history there, when one was changed, the other just wasn't. But, if they could both be the same, that, yeah, thanks, that makes sense to me, I would support that change.
Seems reasonable, anybody have any other suggestions or comments?
I highlighted on the, on the working document here.
About, about that in particular, no, that would be great. I think just, I think it's wonderful, we have a consistent, singular elementary parent handbook, so parents don't have to navigate between the two schools for consistency, that's great. I would just, I think probably, in looking at different aspects, and in looking at kind of the typographical ease of navigating that elementary handbook, it was a little bit difficult for me, so if we could, again, just have a similar format to like the high school, hyperlinks were easy to follow, but if I, if I was looking at a table of contents in the elementary book, and if it said page 33, I struggled to find any page numbers. So if we could also, just for being able to find things, and if we could also look at, I don't know if we have to approve all of these tonight, if we could, maybe perhaps, I would suggest, hold off on the elementary handbook, because I know there were a bunch of perhaps hyperlinks or typographical, looking at that dress code too, I think that mentions a few, it almost seems like, quickly glancing at it, one of the more stringent dress codes of the bunch, and for elementary kids versus high school kids, I would just, it just, just seemed, just did not be the same kind of wording to me when I quickly glanced between high school and middle school, and IS kind of seemed consistent, elementary seemed just different to me. That would be my only comment, if there are other changes that need to be made or edits to the elementary.
We did, we did leave the strike throughs in to show the changes, and the red font to show and identify any of the significant changes, I'm looking in particular at the MTSS, that was just to identify, so it was an easier...
Yeah, yeah, no, that's very much appreciated. I didn't know if in any of the other, like emails or comments, if there were going to be any other changes, maybe we'd hold off on the elementary one, just so we could get them all at once. But if folks don't think that's necessary, that's, that was my only comment. Page numbers is not a significant change, that would just help parents navigate.
I just had a quick question about the absentee information and the tardiness, and I don't see anything that there is, it's been my understanding that students are marked, are marked absent if they leave early, is that, is that something that, I didn't see that time, which I think it was 2:00 or a certain time?
Which handbook are you?
It's actually not in the handbook, it's just, I guess, a general question, I don't know if that's a state requirement, or if that's just something that we've done in this district?
Well, and if you're not physically present in the class, you have to be marked absent. That's, that's for Tim's reporting, that's for all statewide reporting.
Is that 2:00, is that the timeframe?
Well, not for the whole day, just depending, it could be for a period, if you're not in the class for that class period. But if you're talking, because you have really an early release, or if you were out, if you're taken out by a parent, or you're having a doctor's appointment or something like that?
You know, kids have worth it honest appointments, and or trips, and you leave before 2:00.
I think the high school, I think the high school delineates those, those, some, I, because I...
I didn't see it in the handbook.
Okay, you're right, because it's, at a certain point, it seems like you get marked as a half a day, right? Which, even if you miss like a period, it's a half off, I've noticed in the past, for the same reason, appointments. So, yeah, that's a good point, I don't know if there's a uniform threshold that's applied.
I will tell you, I'm not familiar with it here, but that is what, that is an eternal question.
Yeah.
And it has, it goes back to the student information system, its ability to track like certain percents of days, and then a reporting thing on the report card as to how to generate so much time off per period and have it convert to, so, it is a, it is a question that's been asked many times, and a very good question, but it's like, there's a remarkable, complex answer to a seemingly very simple question. I'm suspecting, because that has always been my experience, the interaction between the student information system that actually prints the stuff onto the report card, and the numbers of periods and half-days and all that. So, we could find out how it works, and then come back with the report.
Thank you.
And I don't know if any of our principals there have anything to add to that analysis, or...
That pretty much has been as it was explained to us all these years. It was the student management system and the state law that determined start and stop times and half-days, quarter-days. And as you said, Dr. Main, probably the best thing to do is go back into our homework time.
With Dr. Dunne, who I have not coordinated on this.
Any other comments or suggestions?
We won't change any of the substance, but we should modify it.
Yeah, I don't think these are substance changes, so, we're going to, we're going to have a motion to approve these handbooks. The A through, we have EB, including the athletic code of conduct, of the revisions that were discussed regarding input for the elementary school handbook, being more accessible to the user to use, the dress code revision, and some better options, perhaps explaining on absenteeism. So, folks aren't asking the question, we kind of wait.
Right.
Okay, we motion?
So move. Second.
Okay, who?
I'll motion there.
I'll motion, I'm just making sure Ann Marie under there captures this. Okay, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Okay, and what's Ann, the code of conduct? Mr. Kathy?
Good evening. Tonight? How's that, okay. Good evening, so tonight, on the business and finance, we have approval of the bills list, start with. Bills list, pretty standard fare here. I looked at a quick breakdown, it's $1.5 million. The top three items, as far as in the aggregate, would be, number one, would be our partnerships with the CLIU, which comes to $443,000 in this bills list, LCTI is $100,000 in this bills list, and LTRIC is $12,000. So in total, they're $555,000, or they represent 37% of the total bills list this month. The next group is transportation, two big transporters, Brandywine, who also runs most of our athletic trips. Their breakdown of $248,000 is $172,000 for the general transportation, and about $65,000 for our athletic trips for various teams. In addition, we have Norman's Bus Service, and in total, they represent $371,000, or 24% of the bills list for this month. Coming in number three would be charter school tuitions. Fifteen charter schools totaling $170,000, or 11% of the bills list for this month. Additionally, the rest of the bills list, in, you know, ends up being 28% of the aggregate, and under construction, we have two bills. One larger bill is for a four-month period of $86,000 associated with the stadium project, and most of that is for engineering services that were performed over the last four months in working towards getting the permitting completed. So in total, for construction is $96,000. That's pretty much it for the bills list, unless anyone has a specific question.
Mr. Pepe, what is Papco?
Yeah, Papco, if you remember, I talked about it a couple times in the past, is the bid for the diesel. That's the company that we have the bid with the diesel. And actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because the bid expired last month. The County of Lehigh, to their credit, got an extension for two additional months. They're currently reviewing new bids, and we'll see how they come out. And hopefully, we'll be able to still, you know, get the best price possible, and when you see the price at the pump, you know, it is a concern. But thank you. Treasurers' report, everything, bid in total for the end of the period was about $29.5 million. The general fund had a balance of about $2 million. Our investments were in various accounts, starting with PSD Laugh, which is the liquid asset fund for Pennsylvania schools, at $2.1 million. That's kind of where the flow-through of all our state aid comes, so the money is constantly going in and then moving to the general fund. Pliggett is very small at this point, $12,000, that's where we still have a credit card on file. And QNB, we had investments of about $5 million. New Tripoli, $20 million, that's one of the better rates that we had. I just had conversations with them, which I got them to double the rate, so we're definitely moving in the right direction there. Customers Bank is $353,000. Outside of that, we have money in the reserves, Capital Projects, $1.1 million, Self-Inured Benefits, $47,000, and Post-Employment Benefits, $2.5. And that's pretty much it for the Treasurer's report. Which will now be going over to Dr. Wayack. And what else do you have? And what else do we have on there? Yeah, I, I explained that. That's just on for the vote tonight. And then under property tax refunds, again, there's a total, there's a total of seven thousand, six hundred dollars in here. Most of the properties you will see are all coming from the same development. And that's the estates at Upper Salkin. And the reason why we have refunds here is the individual who was charged out, happened to be Toll Brothers, and they were charged in error. So the county has now corrected the properties to the rightful owners who will now be paying the property taxes.
With that, we are bonding the board officers. And we're elected treasurer. So do you want to talk a little bit about bonding the board officers for some of the newer votes?
Yeah, bonding is a requirement each year. Whenever someone goes into the position, the bonds obviously are at a slightly lower amount. I'm also bonded myself. And anyone who has any role or function on behalf of the board gets bonded to protect the board.
Does anybody have any comments or questions for Mr. Pepe? I have a motion to approve seven, eight through E.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Anyone opposed? Anything for me are approved.
Number eight, human resources. We have fifteen items on the list tonight. Items A through O. There are some replacements, some retirements, some resignations, some summer support, some PD for the summer and extra fall extracurricular activities, me and our coaches are listed just to highlight the HR section. Does anybody have any questions?
I just have a quick question. I really appreciate, obviously, what the, the coaches do for our students. And when you break it out hourly, they, they pay pennies on the, on the hour. But can you just talk briefly about the various stipends and the percentages and how that's determined?
So that's contractual. There's a spreadsheet or a sheet in their, their contract and it talks about increases. There's no increase for this year. And again, that's contractual. That was something that was negotiated before I, I came on board. So those are all predetermined.
You know, certain, certain, like an assistant coach will be at eighty percent and.
So what happens is that the, the board has approved a certain amount of money to be paid for assistant coaches. And they've also approved a number of assistant coaches. Sometimes the, the teams either require more or want more. And then the coaches get together and say, hey, I don't have to take my full stipend. I'll take twenty percent. And then you can have eighty percent. So they work it out so we never go above the number that's contractually obligated. But then they can get more support.
Thank you.
A motion to approve eight through N.
So moved.
Eight, eight through N.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
I was just going to say, are we not including O? I, I just couldn't get my mic on fast enough. Turn the page, okay.
Do it again, A through O, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Anyone opposed? Those are approved. We're going to talk about committee reports. So we have so least committee reports tonight.
I mean, they've already reported out, so it's. But this work has been one of the primary things that we discussed. I mean, it's. ACMC met and the results of that are posted under information only at, at section thirteen B, helping.
I, I have, I had a question, but I didn't know if it should wait for new business or if it should be under communications or not. Okay, I had asked for some, back, some documentation about the computer programs that we had talked about, that we were going to be cutting. And I was hoping to, I was looking to get the list of the software programs that we use with their associated costs. And to date, I haven't gotten them. And being that we've had a very significant amount of teachers that had written into the board, I had kind of wanted to see that information and kind of get a handle on what we were looking at and see it for myself, especially since it was a budget item and we are expected to vote on the budget. I was, it was a budget question and I was hoping to get that list. And I didn't know who I should ask because I, like I said, I have asked a number of times, but I haven't gotten anything yet.
Well, and I'll, I'll respond. And as, as you know, Mrs. Gang, where I've, I've asked you to call me so that we could discuss the full context of, of that list. And I simply reiterate that offer to you. And also to let the board know that we are in the process of having very productive conversations with our staff. We're trying to better understand the scope of this issue. And we are working on a report that will reflect those conversations once we have more concrete determination to report to the board. But there are a number of complexities with respect to reporting that I think would make much better sense to talk about rather than send a list without context, particularly regarding how that information might be communicated in a way that would add, you know, help and insight to those who are receiving those types of communication.
You, you, yes, you did, you did call and you left me a message saying that you wanted to explain it. But I was, I was actually just looking for the spreadsheet data. I understood what we were trying to accomplish and what the goal of the district was. But I wanted to see the data for myself because it was budgetary data. And I was just hoping somebody would have sent me that spreadsheet.
And this gang where I did explain to you now that this was under review by administration, teachers involved, and that there's a chain of command that leads to the teachers back. So as this is a influx and process of any that's getting renewed and decisions have not been concluded.
But this was, this was a spreadsheet of the software programs that we use and their associated costs. This wasn't, I wasn't looking for information that they, they're currently discussing or in talks about. I wanted a list of the software programs and their costs. Like that wasn't, I, I don't, I don't understand why that's an issue.
I would, as I said, I would continue to offer the opportunity to explain in detail those concerns with you. But I think in this public forum is probably not the best way to do it.
The, the, it's from the CLIU. The last CLIU meeting took place virtually. And typically, there is a presentation that I report out on and goings on. This had to be through Zoom because of the same day we had weather cancellations. That was the day of the IU meeting. And so I will say that other than an IU board member from East Penn having to resign from the IU board and be replaced, there was nothing out of the ordinary or any significant, especially since it was streamlined for that Zoom meeting. So I will, I'll report any happenings. Hopefully, we'll be able to get back together and won't have tornado warnings and such next time.
Mr. Moore, do you have anything about CTI that you'd like to share with the group?
Yeah, the only thing to report at this point is, they're in the process, we're in the process of electing a new replacement for the executive director. Dr. Tim Rushton is retiring. And there were strong candidates. And that's about all I can talk about there. But I think, you know, it's, it's, just for everyone's information, it's one of the largest technical education high schools in the country. One of the premier ones in the country. It's a very big facility, a lot of students, a lot of capital, a lot of programs. They probably have more programs than almost any other technical high school as well. So it's a big, big task. And I think they are doing a great job there. And we'll see how all of that goes in the upcoming meeting.
Under other business, we have received a number of resumes of some interest from the community that represent us with LTRIC. And that's term would be, if I understand it, Dr. Man, from July through July twenty-twenty-eight.
That's correct, yes.
It's your term, it's a long term. And because of the significance and the number of folks that expressed interest, what we'll be moving forward to do is set up meetings with those individuals. And then we'll be getting back together to talk about and nominate a representative out of the board. So Dr. Man, will you be setting up those?
I will.
With LTRIC.
Yes, yes.
So it'll be collaborative. So those of you who are out there listening and waiting to hear who we're going to nominate or approve, just so you know, the process is, Dr. Man will work with LTRIC to schedule those interviews that we, as board members, can participate to make the decision.
Yeah, and I would say, this is driven by the extremely high quality of all the applicants. Mr. Moore, I notice is, is here tonight, as perhaps others are. And so in, in the board's effort, you know, to get this extremely important appointment to a very valuable partner, correct? It was suggested, I think wisely so, that the board wants to, to meet and engage with these exceptional candidates and to truly inform this critically important decision. And we will make sure that we take action to facilitate that process right away.
Do we need to table this item or can we just? Right, so motion to table? Sure, second, let's do that, sure. Yes, yes, we're all.
Anybody opposed about tabling? Great.
And sorry to drag you out another night, Mr. Moore. I see you there in the audience. We appreciate you coming out. I see, you know, you're.
Appreciate your service, I believe, over the last, what, six years?
Yep, your, your attendance is, thanks.
Oh, there's new business. I just had a request of, under new business.
Go ahead.
It's, it's, I'm not even sure, I've never brought anything like this up before. But just over the past week, you know, there's a lot of year-end things going on at the schools. And just to follow up my previous comments or requests to kind of figure out a way that we could, I guess, build upon the performing arts in a way that's more cost-effective given our current situation. So I just, I was hoping that maybe there could be some type of process. And I know you, you mentioned, I think, Mr. Pepe, that there already is that type of process with respect to individual building principals, getting requests, you know, for each item again, as a part of the budget process from individual teachers. But, you know, one thing I noticed, just like simple things, like more than one microphone, like the middle school, for example. Actually, it was at the IS, you know, the Jazz Fest that moved back and forth because of the issues with the, with the power outage that happened a couple of weeks ago. For example, there was, you know, very limited number of mics. And they had a lot of, I guess, limitations with respect to movement, you know? Like they had to keep, you know, the, the band instructors have to keep rushing around with the mic to try to help with the soloists. And I know that for the middle school musical, there were some technical issues, I noticed, at least on opening night, with respect to a lot of static on the, you know, my, so maybe just like minor things, like getting a tune-up, you know, with respect to what we already have in place because those kids worked so hard, you know, over a number of months to, to present that musical, just little things like that. I don't know if we could maybe encourage our band instructors and those that are responsible for theater productions to maybe give feedback, just if there's minor things that we can work in and maybe at, at the expense of something else that it already, they'd already asked for, for example, so it doesn't increase the amount on the budget.
Maybe if you contract with same folks, it gives these awesome money.
So maybe, maybe tomorrow, maybe tomorrow, we'll talk to the principals about, is there anything that we can do that could reasonably help our situation out, so?
That's another thing. We have really strong parent-teacher organizations and perhaps tapping into those. And also, as a, as a district, if we could kind of resurrect the education foundation or a coordinator to kind of coordinate the resources we already have with that active parent association in the community between those. I would really like to see a, an education foundation coordinator-type position explored in this new year. I think it would, I think it funds itself in many other districts. And that's exactly the kind of thing. And until then, someone to coordinate and partner with those parent-teacher organizations would be, would be great as well.
I mean, if there's a need to, that's identified, I think, for example, in the music department, we have an active Southernly High Music Parents Association. I'm sure they would be interested in, you know, having some type of fundraiser, for example, like a booster event to help if it's a nominal cost, that type of thing. But just, just something to think about.
Yeah, and a district-wide position to kind of facilitate all those organizations, I think, would, would really help the school and the community.
Any other new business?
I just didn't get a chance to thank Mrs. Gariello for her service. And I appreciate the short time that I met with her to review some of the things that we're, we've been moving on in the school district with regards to, well, many topics, but one that I've been most interested in that she spoke of tonight with STEAM. The STEAM program with MRC, I think that's a great way to partner with the regional business community and provide additional insights into the four walls of this building regarding technical education, engineering, and the sciences. I don't know how much from a STEAM standpoint they're working on with the arts, but I'm just not familiar whether or not they are. So just want to put that out there and wish her well.